Call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem to order. If the recorder will call the roll.
Vice Chair Kizer.
President.
Commissioner Anderson.
Likewise.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Leung.
Here.
Commissioner Osik.
Here.
Chair Hoi.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
And Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
And if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Counselor Kizer, or Commissioner Kizer, any additions or deletions?
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Didn't even have my laptop out here. Uh, let's see. I...
The answer is no.
Right, there are no additions.
Thank you. Anybody signed up for public comment? Thank you. Nobody signed up for public comment. Commissioner Kizer, the consent calendar.
All right, I move the approval of the consent calendar.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, on the consent calendar, we have minutes from the August 26, 2019 Salem Housing Authority. And we have 3.2A, which is authorizing the attached grant agreement between Housing Authority of the City of Salem and City of Salem to provide $700,000 of committed funds to the Housing Authority for the homeless rental assistance program. We have 3.2... Sorry, Resolution 3.3A, which is adopting Resolution Number 2252 to authorize Salem Housing Authority to accept admission into the permanent supportive housing development and operational team technical assistance cohort from Oregon Housing and Community Services. There's 3.3B, which is adopting Resolution Number 2251, adopting Salem Housing Authority's consolidated operating budgets for fiscal year 2019-20. And 3.3C, which is adopting Resolution Number 2253, authorizing Housing Authority to submit an application to HUD proposing disposition of the Orchard Village acreage through Section 18 demolition disposition.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We have no... I'm sorry. Does your staff want to make a comment on the consent calendar?
Only to make one correction on the budget staff report. So, um, for... On the budget staff report, on the... Let me find the right page. On page two, um, the proposed...
Can you identify the item?
This is, yes, so this is item 19435.
Thank you.
There, the operating budget totals, the $28 million total, there is one line item that was left off of that that should be the Section 8 funds for an additional, or HUD Housing, sorry, $22,492, 482 that was not called out, identified in that staff report. So, we wanted just to make sure that that is reflected in the staff report.
So, it's in the material but not in the staff report?
Yes, correct.
Seeking legal advice? We are going to re-adopt the motion, just to make sure.
Yeah, so it's in, it's in the budget document but was not in the staff report.
Thank you. Counselor Kizer, another motion?
Again?
Yes, please.
Move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, and we adopt the consent calendar. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes again. All right. We have no public hearings, we, uh, no special orders of business. We do have an information report. Ms. Utes?
Thank you, I'm Nicole Utes. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. There is one section that I would like to take note to, which is the HRAP numbers, or the Housing Rental Assistance Program statistics. We have been reporting that there's 150 reported enrolled to date to this inception, and we just want to make sure that everybody understands that some of those are dual households. So, the actual client number is 237 that are fully housed for the homeless rental assistance program, which is quite an impact when you account for all of those that are doubled up into one household. So, we just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that.
Thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you. As well as that, we go into our second year operating of this and the success rate. Again, I'm going to reiterate that we're at 83%, which is above the national average for the homeless rental assistance program. There's been many efforts over the past year, again, to cooperate with more landlords, including a landlord training that was just recently held at the Housing Authority that included 26 new landlords that are very eager to help with the homeless rental assistance program. All of our other numbers and statistics, you will see that we continue to remain housed for our public housing, and our voucher lease upgrades are slowly gaining some initiative with the new small area FMR that was approved recently.
Commissioner Anderson has a comment or a question.
Thank you very much, Ms. Utes. I'm, I like to, want to go back to the HRAP statistics, which are outstanding, and commendations to you and your staff, and also to the landlords in the City of Salem for stepping up. So, we've got 237 individuals housed. What's the possible universe of people who could be housed?
Well, there's still many more. The number that is approximately about 480 to 500 that are chronically homeless in the Salem area.
And we've by far surpassed the mayor's goal of the 100. I presume you want to continue moving on this, so maybe next report, we may have, especially with the new landlords, we may have more than 237 people housed.
Absolutely. Our new numbers indicate that we should have four new move-ins just this week.
Great, thank you.
That's fantastic. Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, Nicole, I didn't see this in your report, and I hoped you would bring it up, and I will. There was, um, an occurrence this, earlier this month at 1308 Orchard Heights Road Northwest, trees coming into somebody's house that required getting a crane, relocating them and the family.
Yes.
And it looks like the, your folks did all the coordination for that, so now you're even more multi-talented. But I want to thank you for, the folks from West Salem for attending to that so quickly.
Thank you, yes. We did have a tree in the recent windstorm that did go into the rooftop of a town home where a family was located, and it did require a crane to remove that, and we did have them relocated within 24 hours.
Any other questions or comments, or any other comments from staff?
Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, September 23rd to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Kizer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Good day.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoi.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here, thank you. Approval of additions or deletions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items to, uh, for the additions to the agenda. Item 5.2B, declaring the Ward 7 council position vacant. Item 6.2B, notice of appeal received. And item 7.1C, amending Salem revised code, Chapter 601 flood pain overlay zone.
All right. Got a second on that?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Council comments. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess my comments are on the agenda directed toward item 5B, but on a personal level, they're directed toward the counselor who sits across from me, Counselor Cook. I have greatly appreciated working with Sally. I have said this many times to her personally, but also in public venue. She is the conscience, was a conscious conscience of the city council, and I appreciated her speaking from the heart on various issues that came in front of our body, especially with respect to safe routes to school, child family cities, and the well-being of families in this, in this city. And that dedication and public service will be missed by us all.
I'm sure we all agree, Counselor. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment because I'm so grateful for my time to have been able to represent the citizens of Ward 7. I just have a quick quote. "Go to the people, live with them, learn from them, love them. Start with what they know, build with what they have, but the best leaders, when the work is done, when the task accomplished, the people will say, 'We have done this ourselves.'" That's one of my favorite quotes, and I really hold it to the work that we do here at council and the work we do in our communities, because it's only with leadership and with cooperation that we're able to move forward and gain any process. And with that in mind, I want to thank the residents, not just of Ward 7, but of the city, for speaking up, for being willing to listen, and for holding the work that we do here at coun, here that we do at council accountable. I want to thank staff for supporting residents and meeting our legal obligations, for being resourceful in the face of limited resources, and for working with council to energize, engage, and encourage a bright future for Salem. I also want to thank my fellow counselors for committing to the work that we do, for learning together through disagreement, and for supporting myself and my family through this unknown, strange, new chapter we find ourselves in. And I'm really sorry for crying, but obviously Counselor Hoi purchased flowers I was allergic I just want to thank everybody, and I just want people to know I have that gratitude for everyone here.
Thank you, Counselor. I hope you know you have the tremendous gratitude of the entire city for your service, and from all of us for your, your good nature and your good advice and your good counsel. Thank you so much. And we'll deal with your, we'll probably have more comments as we deal with the issue directly. Any other comments? Counselor Kizer?
Well, I can't follow that up, Sally.[805.12][805.12](Laughter). I, I just wanted to say I've so enjoyed working with you and getting to know you over these last few years, and I guess people aren't going to confuse us now, right?[815.12][815.12](Laughter) Because it seems to happen often, so, but...
My sister from a, yeah, I don't know if that works.
Yeah.[823.12][823.12](Laughter). But you've done tremendous work, really, and I think you've set a bar, too, for public servant-hood for the city. That just hasn't been there, and I think you've done a great service to the people of Ward 7 and to your community, and I will, I will miss you a lot here, but looking forward to, to work with you again one day. I just, I know it'll happen, so...
Counselor Hoi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what my colleagues have said, Sally, I'm going to miss you a lot. You know, we, on, once, you know, when you're on city council, we end up oftentimes, I'm sandwiched in between 5:00 and 7:00. Just, it seems like at events, always at meetings, and so you really gain a camaraderie with the people you sit next to, because you, you spend so many hours, and I have really appreciated our camaraderie. I appreciate our Sunday night phone calls before council. We usually spend quite a bit of time on the phone talking about issues, and you always help me see things in a way that I don't always see them, and I really appreciate that, and I thank you. Thank you for your friendship and for your service.
Counselor Leung?
Counselor Cook, I want to say thank you again for your service to the community. You've been wonderful to get to know, and I still remember when we first met, it was when we were doing public health-related work, and we had met in the Marion County office, and we were talking about, I think, built environment, I think that was our topic, and chronic diseases, and how we could work together on our other jobs. And sort of past nine months, it's been great working alongside with you on the council. I will miss you, and I will miss attending our Neighborhood Association meetings together, so thank you again for everything.
All right, any further comments? I had a chance to participate in a couple of things. I just want to mention CTEC last week built out its 10th and final program with an extra agribusiness section and a culinary arts section. They now have 10 programs at CTEC, and they're heading toward their 1,000-student goal out there, and it's a, it's a really fantastic program. I get invited, I think, because the city, for one of the first times in its history participating in an education project, we put in about $2.45 million. Thank you to our Urban Renewal Director and Urban Renewal Department using urban renewal funds. We had a real opportunity to work with them on that. The second was a major milestone 10 years ago, it's been, when the Croc Center opened, and that was celebrated along with Jerry Frank's 96th birthday. So, we had a, quite a large gathering out at the Croc Center. It was really quite an event, but it's surprising to think back on 10 years ago that was completed. Former Mayor Janet Taylor was the emcee of the event there, and she recounted the history of how did we get there, and as you listen to the timelines involved in accomplishing that goal, it really was a, a big project. I know you, Counselor Nanki, were the counselor here for the, the front, front-end work on all that, so it's very exciting. Long time ago, yeah. Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you. No proclamations, a presentation on the census. Is this that county mall?
Yes, it is.
Yay.
Am I on? Can you hear? Okay. I have a presentation here. There it is. There we go. So, I'm Kirsten Stein. I'm a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau.
I'm going to have you, ask you to get closer to that mic. I have a little trouble hearing you.
Sure. Shines low, okay. There we go. My name is Kirsten Stein with the U.S. Census Bureau, and I'm here to talk about what's going to be happening in the next seven months in the run-up to the 2020 census count. And, there we go. Why we do a census? Because of Article 1, Section 2 of the U.S. Constitution mandates that every 10 years we count everyone in the United States. The key purpose is to apportion the 435 seats belonging to the U.S. House of Representatives. Oregon is getting another one next year. Everyone's very excited about that. Hasn't quite happened yet, but it will. The 2020 census goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. In the right place means where everyone is living on April 1st, where they're spending the night April 1st. The information we collect is private and confidential. We only report aggregate data. We're prohibited by law from releasing personal information to any person or organization under, and that's governed by USC Title 13. All census employees take a lifetime oath to never divulge personal information. For the rest of our lives, we can get five years in prison and a big hefty fine for that. I don't personally know anyone who's done that, but I've heard rumors. So, our challenge, by September 2020, throughout the whole U.S., will count approximately 330 million people living in 140 million housing units in order to obtain a complete and accurate count. That's a lot of millions. In Oregon, using July 2018 estimates, we expect there are 4.2 million people living in 1.8 million housing units, and they'll all need to be counted. We have a new ability to self-respond, starting on March 12, 2020. People can go online onto the internet and answer the questions. They can still call an 800 number and do it by phone. They can fill out the old-fashioned paper form, and they can expect an in-person visit from a census worker if they don't respond any other way. That will be in April, May, June, and July. So, this is the process, starting on March 12 to July 24. We send out five invitations to people, asking them to self-report. They'll either be mailed to your home, or they'll be delivered, if you live out in a rural area, on your doorknob. The third invitation is a mailer that includes the traditional short form. We assume that if you don't respond to the first two, that means you don't want to go online and put your information online, and so we send you a paper form, and if you don't fill out the paper form, then somebody will knock on your door after the, after the census is over and try to get your information that way. Does anyone have any questions about that? That part? No? All right. We use about 59 languages in one way or another. The internet self-response comes in 13 languages, the most popular in Oregon. If anyone has any trouble with any languages, they can contact us or go to the library, and we'll figure something out to help them. These are the questions we ask. We ask nine. We ask for a name, address, and phone number. We ask for people's gender, and anyone can put down any gender they want. We don't care, we don't judge. We ask for age and date of birth, number of people living at that particular address, the relationship to other inhabitants also at that address. We ask for a race, and we ask if someone is of Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin. Any questions about that? Yes.
I'm curious about the reason for number nine, asking those countries, and I guess I'm looking at in relation to the failed attempt to ask the citizenship question, and that seems to me like it's moving pretty close to that. So, why is that group singled out as opposed to people from Norway, for example?
Well, I would have to say that the Hispanic population of Oregon is growing, and we want to make sure that they have all of the services that they're entitled to. We have a lot of non-English-speaking families living in the United States, and because a lot of people who are of Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin speak English as a second language, we want to make sure that they have all the services that they need.
Thank you very much for that answer.
Yes. Yes?
I actually had a question on the last slide, on the different languages that are being offered. You mentioned that if, for the internet self-response, if there was a language on there that was not available for someone who, for, I guess, who didn't speak any of those languages, to go to the library, but the library here in Salem will be closed for renovations, so where will you, where will we send people to in that instance?
I will jump into that. I didn't know that about the Salem library. Do you know how long it's going to be closed for?
That, I, it, it's not closed, it's moved away from its current location.
So, the library will...
It'll be in an alternative location for a couple of years.
So, it'll be open?
Yes.
Okay. Capitol Press Building. So, we will be having census resource centers in all of the libraries in all of Oregon with census employees and librarians and volunteers to assist people in filling out their forms online. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. So, I work specifically, for example, with the Micronesian community and other Pacific Islander communities. What is the likelihood of there being language cards or availability to help out those communities?
I could talk to you after the meeting about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
For non-documented residents, what is the risk, or how do they report for communities that might have hesitancy around the census regarding their status?
We would still like to count them. There's no penalty for not answering the census. There's only a penalty for not telling the truth. So, is your question how we are going to reach undocumented people, and how are we going to calm their fears that they can answer the census, and we won't report them to ICE or law enforcement? We're working really hard to get the word out to those communities that we're not going to do any of that. Yes?
Follow-up question, actually. I've been noticing that there's been, I guess, a few pre-census folks who are walk, or some census folks who are walking around knocking in neighborhoods, and I've been seeing some posts, for example, on, on Nextdoor and a few other things, where people were concerned about who's coming to their door. What, are there ways that you are reassuring folks that these are actually census people and not just some random person trying to obtain information?
Right now, we're doing address canvassing. Where census employees are walking from neighborhood to neighborhood and noting addresses and putting them in an iPad, and then turning them in at the end of the day. We're using that information to send out postcards to addresses. A lot of new housing units have gone up that weren't in place in 2010, so that's the purpose of that. The address canvassers have big black canvas bags that say U.S. Census Bureau on them, and they carry laptops that have a big census logo on them, and they also have big badges that they have to wear right here that say U.S. Census Employee on them with their picture. And they're not supposed to be asking personal questions, they're just asking addresses. Okay. I don't know what happened here. Any other questions? No? All right, moving on. The census count determines state funding. Total funding to all 50 states based on tax revenue every year is $883 billion. Oregon's share of that is $13.5 billion, and that's what this paper's for here. This, from the George Washington University, delineates how much money Oregon receives every year based on the census count, excuse me. Oregon's per capita estimate of that money is $3,200 per person. State funding depends on an accurate census count, because if you turn over to the back, you can see how that $13 billion is divvied up among all the state programs that Oregon has. Section 8 housing vouchers, TANF, WIC, Head Start, school breakfast and lunch programs. Because state funding is dependent on an accurate census count, not counting a few hundred people or a few thousand people, can add up to billions of dollars not being received by Oregon every year. And I have another slide that demonstrates that. This is the Salem area census tract. Some colors are darker, some are lighter. I've averaged out all of the low response rates for all of the census tract, and Salem has, the whole Salem area has about a 30% low response rate. That means in the 2010 census, about 70 people responded, 70% of the people in Salem responded to the census. Dark blue areas are ones where the response rate was a whole lot lower than we'd like, and those are probably the areas that need more services based on our experiences in the past. Population math for that is, if you consider that Salem has about 170,000 population, an undercount of 30% is about 51,000 people, you multiply that by $3,200 a person, that's $163 million Oregon has not received each year since the 2010 census count. So, we only have one chance to get it right. So, in 2020, we need to get as accurate a census count as possible, because for the next 10 years, all of the money that Oregon receives from the federal government is based on that one count for 2020. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Pretty clear.
That's a stunner. Okay, so, these are the top six hard-to-count populations all across the U.S. Renters, senior citizens, children younger than five, foreign-born or immigrant populations, homeless people, and migrant workers. And we're doing our best to come up with ways to reach all of those populations. In Salem, renters account for about 50 to 75% of the population in all of the census tracts. Possible reasons for undercounting them can include maybe they're more transient, they move frequently, they may have less community involvement, they may be apathetic. We don't know, because we can't get ahold of them to ask them why they don't want to respond to the census, so we're kind of just guessing. Senior citizens 65 or older in Salem, that population is about 6%. Possible reasons for undercounting them are physical isolation. We are working with community centers, senior centers, Meals on Wheels, Dial-a-Bus, the organizations that take them to their doctor's appointments, and we're trying to get them to develop relationships with their constituents and their clients, to tell them, hey, the census is coming, don't be afraid of it. If you need help, we can get you help. And we are creating advertising... And we are creating advertising campaigns specifically for senior citizens, 65 or older. Children under the age of five in Salem, that's approximately 10%. Possible reasons for undercounting that population include split custody. Maybe the father has the kids, so the mother thinks the father's going to count them. The mother has the kids, so the father thinks the mother's going to count them. Neither one get counted, or both get counted, and they cancel each other out, and one gets thrown out. We're looking for ways to mitigate that issue. If anybody has any ideas, we'd be happy to hear that. We're also, excuse me, we also have an issue that's becoming more and more frequent, where grandparents are raising their grandchildren. They live in age restricted housing, 55 and older. They don't want to tell the census taker they have little children living with them, because they're afraid we'll tell someone, they'll get into trouble. The landlord, you know, might give them a hard time. We don't tell anybody. We just want to know who's living there. Not counting a few hundred young children could be the difference between not getting a Head Start program that's needed in that area. If we don't count them, we don't know that something like that is necessary. So we're looking for ways to mitigate that issue as well. Foreign born residents in Salem estimates are between 2 and 20%. Possible reasons for undercounting them are maybe language issues, maybe they're afraid to talk to us, maybe they're unaware that we even do a census every 10 years. And the homeless count in Marion County, we don't have good estimates for the homeless in any county in the U.S. We use point and time statistics from 2018. They estimate that individuals living in non sheltered environments in Marion County is about 1,000, 1,049. You know your homeless better than we do. That could be low, that could be high. We don't really know. And migrant workers in Marion County, and in the Salem area, it's estimated there's between 4,000 and 10,000 individuals working in migrant jobs. That does not include all the family members who may be accompanying the worker. A lot of migrants move their families from farm to farm. They include the children, the grandparents, the in-laws, everyone. And we are working on outreach with the farmers for that, because farmers often provide housing arrangements for their migrant workers. We could go busting in there and try to count people, and they'd run from us, because they don't know us. But they know they're farmers, and they trust their employers more than they do us. So we're looking for ways to reach them. 2020 marks the first time the Internet and phone options are both available for self reporting. An accessibility issue in Salem has come up. We asked a question, do you have Internet access at your home? Just that one question, 23% in the Salem area said no. That doesn't mean they don't have a smartphone, or they don't go to the Starbucks parking lot and piggyback off the free Wi-Fi, or they don't go to the library and use the Internet. Just in their home, 23% don't have Internet access. Other issues facing Oregon are post office boxes. People are often unaware of the requirement to respond, fear of the government. We're the government, don't be afraid of us. The cost of non-response, and the recruiting of enumerators. We're recruiting like crazy. We are hiring like crazy. We're having a lot of trouble getting all of the workers that we need. We've started something called a Complete Count Committee, where we encourage government agencies and county agencies to create these little committees, to try to reach agencies that have clients in these organizations, to mitigate the low response rate problem. This is how you can help us obtain an accurate count. Talk to your constituents, your staff, maybe in the newspapers. Tell everyone that your funding, your state funding depends on an accurate count, so please answer the census questions. A lot of people publicize newsletters and websites and social media. We're organizing census information meetings at the library, senior citizens, and city events, as I mentioned. And I'm your local partnership specialist, if anybody has any questions. I'll leave this presentation with Gretchen back here. It looks like that's it. That's...
Great.
We're hiring like crazy. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Will you be back again?
I can't come back, if you want me to.
Well, you might, as you get closer to the date, try some...
Oh, yes. Things are exploding all over. We just started a major advertising campaign. We're trying to let everybody know that we're coming, and not to be afraid of us. And we're all just doing the best we can, right now.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. It's time for a public comment on any issue, except those that are up for public hearing tonight. So if anyone has any comments, I'll call your name. And you will have three minutes, and then a red light, a yellow light will go up at, when you have one minute left. The red light will go up when your time's up. I'd ask you to stop speaking as soon as the red light goes on. If you don't see it, you'll hear me say, please stop. And the first will be Jacqueline Chindell.
Good evening. I'm Jacqueline Chindell. I reside at 970 15th Street, Northeast Salem, Oregon. And I would like to send my greetings to all the lovely councilors, and the mayor, and the city manager, et cetera. The reason I'm talking tonight, addressing you, is I'm concerned about finances for the city of Salem. And I know tonight you're going to be voting, at least in theory, about one of these proposed issues. I would honestly like you to vote on both. Because once upon a time, the city of Salem had adequate services. One of the top libraries in the country for medium sized libraries. We had adequate police and fire ratios per population. We had code enforcement, that was actually staffed. We had monies for neighborhood services, neighborhood watch, et cetera. And we managed very well. But then PERS and a downward economy took its toll. And this wasn't just a problem for a year or two, it was several years. Well, currently, the city of Salem is in crisis. We're running about $8.6 million this year alone in deficits. We have fewer services. And we've elected you all to do something about it. Not to postpone this problem, but to actually find sources. Revenue now, not later. Please, please, don't hold our services hostage. Don't tell us again, oh, we're going to reduce the amount of police, we're going to cut fire, we're going to stop the library. Well, we're getting pretty sick and tired of hearing this every time there's a budget crunch. Now, we can't use these as a hostage. So don't, please, repeatedly threaten us. It's going to backfire. Well, if you feel that you can't postpone these issues, then you would go buy bond or ballot, right? Well, the problem is, the city is, we elected you all to do something, to do it now. Bonds and ballots cost money. And property owners are tired of having to continually raise money via bond. We passed police, we passed school, we passed library bonds. So I urge you, please, vote for the franchise fee, and seriously consider the payroll tax. State workers should be made to pay for services that they, too, are receiving. Act now, but educate. Please, educate the public. There's so much bad information that's floating around. Now, I want you all to take a brave...
Thank you, Jac.
Yeah, just one sec.
Not Jacqueline, time's up. No.
One sentence?
No.
Can't you take a selective serotonin uptake inhibitor?
Thank you very much.
Your brave pill, please pass.
Hi. Am I close enough?
Yeah.
I always feel like I'm not close enough. My name is Patty Tipton. I am the chair of Lansing Neighborhood. And Chuck, anyway, thank you for letting me speak this evening. There was two reasons I wanted to come, and one of them, I would like to invite the mayor and anyone who wants to come. We're having a Make a Difference Day at Lansing Park on 10/26. And we're going to be planting a tree in Virginia Barker's name. Be about 10:00 a.m., we'll be planting the tree. We're also going to be doing some cleanup work in the park itself, through Salem Parks. So we want to welcome anyone who wishes to come and honor Virginia Barker. The second thing, I asked about the $8 a month utility bill. And I wish you would like to consider that a public voting thing, like you did the income tax, to let the people vote on it. And as concerning Sally, I want to let you know, I lost my husband two and a half years ago. One day I came home, and he was dead. The people who supported me, the Most Reliant Hospice Group, they have a wonderful program there for people who want to get support. And they have been my biggest help. And the last two and a half years, they've supported me in a lot of ways. But we were married 40 years. I met him at 18, and got married at 20. And I still miss him, and I will continue to miss him. So don't feel like it's okay not to grieve for him anymore, because you still will, for as long as you live. And I hope you get the support that you need for your loss, because, like I said, I still miss my husband. And there's nothing much else I want to say. I just want to make sure that you do put the utility bill, or whatever you call it, let the people vote on that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Good evening. My name's Bob Elliott, and I live in West Salem, 1775. Been here many times. Brad, thanks for your 15 months to go, countdown. I want to thank the mayor and Jim Ellis for answering my emails, and giving me some, I send a lot to you guys, and I don't know who reads them, who doesn't, but thank you two for getting back to me. Your time that you both put in, and I see Jim all the time, thank you very much for your time. I also like to say, before I speak about the subject, to thank the Garden Foundation, whoever came up with that idea. Your city streets are really clean. They're picking up all the litter and stuff. Whoever thought that one up? I don't know who did it, but great for them. 19398, the operating fee, I know you all support it, obviously. My concerns are, I think you should bring it to a public vote, repeat over here. It needs to. I don't think we should vote on it. I think people will rebel, probably, you know, if you guys just say, yes, we're going to do it, you know, you guys already have your mind made up now, so might as well put it to public vote and get the people voting. The other thing that bugs us is you call it a fee, it goes on a utility bill, and I come here all the time, it's a tax. I want you guys just call it a tax, and then you don't get people all upset. I don't know what the rulings are, I don't know, but you know, you're not sneaking it by anybody. You know, I've been here, the sidewalks, the lights, you know, I just go, I come back here, and it's always a fee. And I thought they'd run out of space on that utility bill, but I think you're making the print smaller, so you can put more in there.
Only one left.
Oh, one space left? Well, maybe this will take it, I guess. But you know, you're not fooling anybody, and you want people to support it. I will support the tax when it comes to a vote. But my concerns are, like, repeat also, we should tax everybody that works in that town. You know, the city, the county, the state employees have been getting a free ride for years and years and years. They use our services. To sell this, 16.2 million, I still think we need to have a more detailed breakout. I do have this little document you gave out. But what I'd like to see, and I can support it in West Salem, is have it be specific, and not just general. And I think the question about PERS is in there. People are going to, you know, we passed another ordinance, and I remember the public works guy saying, oh, we're going to have to worry about the upcoming PERS payment. But let's be realistic, let's just say what it is. And also, repeat, don't use fire, don't use police, that just pisses off the voters out there. That's the one you always do. Then you get the library group, you get the park group, you know, so those are the top four. But, you know, I asked Jim the other day, are we spending our money well? And he thinks we are. I believe him. But let's be honest with the people, have a detailed breakdown. So let's not become Portland or Eugene. Keep the services going, best you can. And thank you for your time, and thank you for the services that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Counselor Kizer.
Yes?
Bob, thank you for your comments. I do read your emails. I occasionally respond, but not super often, so...
Thank you.
My...
Is that your statement? Thank you.
My question is, is you've said, my question is two parts, I guess. If we send it to voters, and voters reject that, what do you suggest the city cuts if, and you've already said, police and fire are not on the table. So within the general fund, what would be your priorities for cutting the budget?
I will take that note to the bank, and I will talk to your budget people and get the breakout. They were at the community building, the community we had at Commons, big thick binder, about that thick, and I would look through it, and...
I'd be really curious what they are, because I mean, police and fire make up the majority of that general fund.
I mean, I can do the obvious, you know, cut back at the top city council. We already did, Jim, mentioned that we let assistant city manager retire, correct, Steve? That we did replace that person, is that correct? So I assume that's a hundred and some thousand dollars, which is just nickel and dimes.
But we're talking about in the millions. So I'm just saying, I would be very curious in receiving another message from you about specifics for cutting the budget that don't include police, fire, really would.
Okay, I'll look at the budget.
Okay.
I'll put some tax...
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for reading it, by the way. Thanks. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you. Bob, on Limbeck Court, I apologize, I can't read your last name.
It's Bob Werthee.
Werthee, okay. Thank you.
And one of the things I was looking at here is, on the utility bills, you come down, we have a number of fees being added. We have base fees, and all, and these fees all say that they are to support city services and all. So now we're adding still another fee to this. Is there any way that the city can incorporate something and say, look, rather than line item, all these things that come out? It just seems like Mr. Nanki said, we've got one item left on there. But it just seems like more and more and more fees all the time, and the city is constantly asking for more money. I'm not saying that I have chosen a path I would vote. I think we do need to take care of things, but I also think that we need to look at, where are we going? More fees, more fees, more fees. The water bill, since I've lived in the city of Salem for about 25 years, used to be every two months, and it's like four times what it used to be with, when you figure it down to a monthly basis. And most of what's on this bill is fees, and base charges, and whatnot. One last thing I did notice, though, is I look at my utility bills, and I found this kind of interesting, because PGE says that the Salem charges them 1.5% franchise fee. Northwest Natural says 2%. CenturyLink says 3%. The water, which is city owned, charges 5%. I don't know what cable charges. But when I go to the city's website, it says it charges all utilities 5%. There's quite a difference there. And I don't know why.
I don't either. What are you doing with that extra money?
We can certainly provide that information to you and to council.
Most of city services are passed through, or the city charges are passed through, and they say it on the utility bills. But then, when I looked at the city of Salem, it says everything's charged 5%. I don't see it, only the water.
Alicia, do you know?
Hi, Alicia Blalock, Public Works Department. The 5% franchise fee is transferred to the general fund.
Is transferred to?
To the general fund.
Right.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, the other, if you read the website there, it says all utilities are charged a franchise fee of 5%. If you look at the utility bills from the utilities, they vary in what that is, and they're all less than 5%.
Are you speaking to the utility billing website for the city of Salem?
No.
Oh, okay. So ours, we would say, all utilities, meaning water, stormwater, and wastewater. So... So in that context, we do charge all of the city utilities 5 percent.
Okay. And maybe I'm reading that wrong, but it just seemed odd why I would...
I think the problem is, I think the problem is the definition of what's a utility in this case, and, and what's a city utility. For city utilities, 5 percent. The others, I think of them as utility too. My electricity, my natural gas, and all, they're not part of city utilities. They're a private franchisee, and they're charged a franchise fee. Now, if that makes sense, you let me know, but...
It does. What, what I see is, and I have retired from a utility.
Okay, you know the...
But, and I'm familiar with franchise fees, and these bills say franchise fees, and they vary from one and a half percent to 3 percent.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
And yet, on the city water bill, it says franchise fee 5 percent.
For its, for water, sewer, stormwater are his, those are the three city utilities that pay that fee. But I, I think you're pointing up a problem with the clarity of that language.
And we'll, we'll investigate that and report back. And if you would leave your contact information with Heather, we can, they're next to you, we can, we can make sure to follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you. That, that really was helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt Hale?
Do you want me to step up there?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. Thank you for your time this evening. I also would like to speak to the point of the franchise fee, or the tax. I know it's technically called a fee. And my point here is that I also recommend that the councilors send this to the voters as well. And I just want to give you a little bit of information. I don't feel there's a lot of confidence out there in the public of what's going on. And I'd just like to read a little bit from your July fourteenth focus group report, and this is quote unquote, "Voters want to hear the real story of what is happening with Salem's budget. There is a general belief that the budget is not transparent enough, and voters want to see evidence that the city can show their math," end quote. I could read a little bit more, but I don't want to get the light and get kicked off, Mayor, so. Why confidence? Well, the police station bond, that's already 5.3 million over. Those funds came from somewhere in the city over the last couple of years. Why confidence? The huge school bond was advertised at a dollar twenty-four per thousand dollars of assessed value. It's a dollar twenty-eight per thousand of assessed value. Why are we lacking confidence? The adopted budget that moved to the approved budget on your website, the numbers went up to 6.6 percent growth in the general fund for salaries and wages, and now 33.8, not 33.6 percent increase in PERS contributions. We already got the huge property tax bill last year of over 11 percent. We'll find out in the next couple of weeks, when they show up in our mailbox, what those property taxes are for us again this year. So there's a lot to be processed here, but I don't have a lot of confidence right now. Counselor here asked Bob a question about recommendations. I'm a survivor of state furloughs. Has the city considered city furloughs? You don't have to answer the question right now. I actually like taking furlough days. And I didn't see a staff increase in the city budget for this year, actually a 1.45 FTE increase overall. So where are the efficiencies if we need all this money? So please, consider this, exercise patience, a little bit of shared sacrifice might help, and send this to the voters, please. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Oh, you're welcome.
I have a question for you. Have you attended a budget committee meeting?
No, you asked me that last month, and I said no.
That's what I thought. I, I thought you looked familiar.
But thank you for asking, Jim.
Curious if you've reviewed those budget documents since last time we spoke?
I did. I, and I was, I was enthusiastic to see that they were the approved budgets now on the website, over 300 pages of good reading, I must add.
Good.
And I want to, I want to just also give kudos to your staff. They answered some of my questions on email. So kudos to the city staff for getting back to me on a couple of questions about incentives and things like that.
Yeah.
But I did review it, yes.
Good.
And no, I have not attended the meeting. If you have a vacancy, you need somebody to come in there and look at it, I'll be happy to take a look.
Well, our boards and commissions website is available, so you can look for vacancies.
No, no, I'm not looking for a job. I'm looking for a volunteer vacancy.
I did want to provide a clarification that the school district issued the school bond.
I know.
That is not within the purview of the city of Salem.
I agree, but it's also the cumulative effect, Counselor, of everyone's tax burden in the city.
I understand that, and property taxes also, by statute, cannot increase more than 3 percent per year.
Yes, but I do believe the...
So, the other thing is, I would like to challenge you, as like I did, Mr. Elliott, to come back, email the council with specific cuts that you would like the city to take, should this revenue option fail. I'm extremely curious. I'm extremely curious by furloughs. I'm also a state employee, and I, I went through that experience as well. I would really be interested in your take on if furloughs would affect our emergency service workers.
Okay.
As well, because they make up the most of the general fund. But seriously, write the council, look at the budget, and see where you would recommend those cuts be made.
Yeah. And I just want to clear something up. I was just looking for, if you need a volunteer to help out on the budget, I'm sure Bob and I could work as a team. And one clarification, I believe that the city's budget does not assume a 3 percent increase in property taxes, but I believe, and someone please correct me if I'm wrong, it's 4.1 percent increase. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So I want that on the record, please, for everyone to hear. It's not 3 percent. The city is assuming in their budget documents, it's a 4.1 percent increase in our property taxes. Thank you.
It's not the rate, it's the growth.
All righty.
How do you do, Matt?
You're next.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Mayor Chuck. My name is Virginia Stapleton. I'm over on Capitol Street, and I came to talk about our proposed taxes and fees that we have coming up. And I am one of those people who are for you guys passing both of them without it being sent to the public. I feel like I did my job by asking you all or voting you in, and I would appreciate it if you guys kind of got to the business of running the city. If we need some more funds, then that's what we need. I, different from some, have immense trust, especially in Mayor Bennett and all of you. My husband also works for the state. We are for that tax that would affect our family personally in that way, and the other tax, or fee, or whatever you guys are calling it. I do represent a demographic of young families, and a lot of them I've talked to, they just don't have time to come down here and talk to y'all. But we all have kids in grade school. We all voted for more funding for our elementary and high schools with the school bond, and of course, we are for all of the different things that you guys have going on right now. And I would love to have more information in a way that is suitable for a young family, mom or dad, to sit down and take a look at. And this may exist, I just don't know about it, but some people may have a lot of time to go through a 300-page document, but we don't. You know, like, I'm in my clothes that I ran around town in today. I feel really underdressed here. I got dinner on the table, and I ran here tonight, because I feel like it's really important for us. But I would, every time I talk to a young family, they don't, they think that the police station is part of the problem, and I know that it's not, and I try and counter that disinformation myself. But it'd be great, I mean, we're friends on Facebook, and I would love to see something come up that says, this is how we get money, this is where the money goes, and kind of like maybe a drill down thing or something. But I just feel like there's a lot of misinformation and not a lot of time for younger families to weed it all out, and I'm, I'm just trying to help us out. That would be awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cook.
Thank you for coming down tonight and for giving up that time with your family to give this testimony. I have a question for you regarding services. As we are a full-service city, do you see places where we, there, it's been brought up in previous testimony, there, there's got to be a large S somewhere, there's got to be these overhangs. I want to hear how city services affect your family directly and the families you're working with. And I know a lot of those services seem really important, but they're often the first ones kind of on the chopping block. If you can talk a little bit about that.
So I guess, just to kind of rephrase, you're asking me what's important to me, what I use from the city.
When you see when it's not there and not funded.
Sure, yeah. I, for our family, we're not so really into like the emergency services, because very, very rarely would we need them, so that's really not on my peripheral. But for me, it's things like the library is vital for me, free parking, please, at the library. And those things like sidewalk repairs in our neighborhoods, things like pedestrian crosswalks and parks, those are the things that me, as a young family, that, that's what I'm using that the city has to offer. And I'm probably missing things, but that's just my quick answer.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. Jacob Moore? And I have no one signed up after Jacob, so if you, okay. Leslie, you want to?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you get in behind Jacob here?
Hello, my name is Jacob Moore. I live at 2226 Hyde Street, and this is a fairly lighthearted one compared to everything else. So there's currently a livestock ban for city of Salem, single residents. Currently, there are exceptions for chickens, ducks, and honeybees, because oddly enough, we can do consider honeybees livestock in the city of Salem. I inquired about quail the other day, which is about a three-ounce bird. They lay eggs, they take about one to two square feet worth of space, and those are currently banned under that livestock ban, just because there is no listed exception for them. I would like to ask that we change city ordinance to also allow for quail, since they're fairly low impact compared to options that are already available for city residents.
Yeah, I don't know how we overlook quail. I really don't. I really apologize. You know, you look out across the world, and you're trying to think of what are we missing?
Oh, yeah.
Skip moves, but I think quail we can...
Yeah, and obviously, there's several different species, and I'm mostly talking about...
Got a favorite?
Well, I'm talking about domestic species, like coryx quail versus what we would see natively here. I've already talked to ODFW, and they don't see that as any type of threat. There's no issues there, because they don't breed in the wild. The only issue they would have is if you were raised as a native species, they'd like to know about it.
So Cornish quail?
Coryx.
Spell it.
C-O-U-R-T-U-N-I-X, something like that. It's weird.
Okay, I thought you were talking about Cornish game hens or something.
No, no, no. They're a little smaller than that even.
Ah, okay.
So they're tiny, but, you know, another egg producer that has mostly been overlooked.
Could you leave or send...
I was just gonna, I'm...
Yet, Garia.
Can you leave your contact info with me?
Of course.
I will be happy to get that ball rolling.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie Poulsen, and I live at 930 Garnet Street. We put on the Inglewood Forest Festival, which was a challenge, because the week, the week before, somebody was killed in Inglewood Park. And so what was difficult is that we discovered that there was really inadequate police because of the budget issues. And so we had a very great meeting with Kara, and who talked about that we really can't wait a year or two years for police funding to come through with, by, with the ballot measures. We have experienced what it's like to not have adequate police. We have neighbors who lived across from 19th Street who were, who are still traumatized. I walked home from this meeting, there's a woman on 19th on Nebraska who's putting her house up for sale. These are really wonderful people who live in the neighborhood, who are absolutely terrified of living where there's not adequate police response. So sure, maybe we could wait for a fee or something, but we are actually in the middle of the city. We have to wait. So if there is a murder, or attempted murder, or a drive-by, or people running around with guns, and, you know, at a neighborhood meeting, we are, we're actually living, and we really feel like we can't wait for people to vote on it. So I, I agree with, I understand the logistics of it, but we can't wait. We need it, we need the budget fixed now, and we understand that most of what we pay in property taxes goes to pay for emergency services. We get it, we hear it. So that's all I'm here to say. And Sally, I'm so sorry about your husband. He was such a sweetheart, and I really, it's been, I'm sure it's been a really difficult summer for you, but I'm glad you stayed on, and I'm so sorry. But I will see you at some movie sometime, trying to save the world. Thanks. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Ah.
What's your name?
Good evening. My name is TJ Sullivan, and I'm a resident of Ward Four. Appreciate the opportunity to come back and address you again, as we discussed this proposed tax measures being referred to the voters. The last time I was here, I, I encouraged you to get out and to talk to the community about the need for these things. I'm not necessarily opposed to either one of these things, but I think there's definitely a case to be made to the public. And one of the questions that was asked of staff after I got done testifying was, gosh, what has our outreach to the community been? Which is a telling tale that you, as a council, don't even know what your outreach to the community has been. And a follow-up question to that would be, and just what was the response from the public? When you don't ask that question about what's the response from the public, the message back to the public is, we don't care. And I get the idea that you're elected to make decisions, and you're elected to run the city, but there's, there's a part of that that requires you to get out and to talk to folks, and not just people in your circle. Because they will always tell you what you want to hear. I've sat where you've sat, and I found that the best feedback that I got was when I went and talked to people that didn't agree with me on everything that I told them. And the best opportunity for me to inform was to go in to sit down with those folks and say, here's where we're at with the city budget. We raised the water and sewer rates in the city so many times that they make what you're about to do pale in comparison. But we also eliminated the entire Parks and Rec Department, which gave us a lot of credence when we went out and talked to voters. We, we bonded the, the, the PERS debt for the city, which was a huge risk at the time, and it continues to pay off for you today. Again, we went out and we talked to the voters. We actually took the budget on the road. I remember doing a, a meeting in Spanish, and Peter Fernandez had to translate for us at McKay High School. And, and that was a great meeting. There was a, a lot of people in attendance who left there with a better understanding of how their city budget operates. You're not doing that. And that was my encouragement to you then, and it's my encouragement to you now. The Citizen Budget Committee advised you to refer these things to the city. I think we'll vote to support them, but you need to get out and do your due diligence to make the case as to why we should. And that's, again, my plea for you tonight, is to refer these out, get out in front of the voters, and let them know exactly why they need to support these two measures. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Anyone else? He, he, he's done his time, Bob. Okay. We will move on then to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent calendar contains item 3.1A, the September ninth, 2019 draft minutes of the city council meeting. 3.2A authorizes the approval of revenue bonds issued by the Hospital Facility Authority of the city of Salem in aggregate, aggregate principal amount not to exceed $305 million. Item 3.3A, agreement for sale of surplus property to Axiom Construction Incorporated. Item 3.3B, Second Amendment to lease with Rudy Steakhouse LLC for property located at 315 Shemekah Street Northeast. Item 3.3C is the First Amendment to lease with Strawberry Seed LLC for property located at 333 Shemekah Street Northeast. Street Northeast. Item 3.3D is an intergovernmental agreement and state sponsorship agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Aviation. Item 3.3E, providing sewer service beyond city limits for property at 3880 Creighton Creek Road South. Item 3.3F, local agency agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for improvements at the Kubler Boulevard Southeast Dan Turner Road Southeast intersection. Item 3.3G, intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife for Minto Brown Island Turtle Habitat Restoration. Item 3.3H, a grant agreement between the Housing Authority of the City of Salem and the City of Salem for the Homeless Rental Assistance Program. Item 3.3I, an order for the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision for Fairview Refinement Plan, Class II Adjustment Subdivision Case Number FRP ADJ SUB-19-01, for property located in the 4100 to 4200 blocks of Pringle Road Southeast, and the 4200 block of Battle Creek Road Southeast. Item 3.3J, an order for City Council decision denying formation of the Aspen Grove Reimbursement District for property located at 1950 Wallace Road Northwest. And of note, Counselor Lewis would like to register a no on Item 3.3J. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Right. Who seconded this? Who did?
Cook.
Cook, sorry. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay. I'm going to open public hearing 19-412.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the Planning Commission's decision for design review, site plan review, adjustment case number DRSPRADJ-19-07. The applicable criteria are SRC Chapter 225.005 E2 and Chapter 702.015.020.025.030.035.0.40 for the designed review, and SRC Chapter 220.005 for the site plan review, SRC 250.005 for the Class II Adjustment. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to 10 minutes. The appellant is limited to 10 minutes. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes, and other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and the applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes.
Ah. Counselor Kizer. Oh, right, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is in my ward, and I am familiar with the parties involved. I do not believe I should participate in this hearing. Therefore, I'm abstaining for participating in this hearing and in council deliberations on this matter.
Okay. It's not because it's another one from Olivia.
There's been so many.
Okay, Olivia, go ahead.
Good evening. Olivia Glanz, Planner with the Planning Division. You have before you an appeal of a Planning Commission decision to approve a three-unit multifamily development. The consolidated application contains design review for multifamily, site plan review, and two adjustments. The subject property currently has an existing house and an additional unit near the alley. The applicant is proposing to remove the unit near the alley and replace it with a duplex, in addition to increasing the square footage of the existing home. This would increase the amount of units by one. The subject property is located between Capital Street, a major arterial, and 12th Street on the north side of Nebraska Avenue. The subject property is owned RM2, which is multifamily residential 2, which is a higher-density residential zone in the Salem Revised Code. As part of any development, as any part of any new development, the size of the property, the code does require three units. The subject property is surrounded by RM2 zoning with some commercial near the corner of Capital Market. The surrounding properties are mostly single-family residential with a duplex and two apartment complexes located near the intersection of 12th Street. So, the applicant is proposing to remove the existing unit near the rear, which will be replaced by the duplex, shown in blue, and the existing house, shown in red, with an addition to be built to increase the square footage, also shown in blue. Since the property is converting from two-family to multifamily, additional parking is required. The applicant is proposing five spaces instead of the required six by code, shown in yellow. As discussed in the Planning Commission decision, the amount of parking provided is consistent with a larger multifamily complex. In addition, shown in green, the proposed five-foot setback to the property line, which is a reduction from the 10 feet required. So, I have some photos of the property. This is from Nebraska Avenue looking towards the property, and then the alley behind the property looking from 12th Street. So, as part of the appeal, it was suggested that the parking be located in the front yard abutting Nebraska. Locating the parking in the front would be inconsistent with the objectives and standards of the city's code, multifamily code. If the parking is located in the front yard, the amount of parking would need to be reduced from six to approximately two spaces. As you can see in the dark blue, the parking area would only accommodate two compact spaces. Four mature trees would be removed to accommodate the parking area and driveway, and the removal of the curb along Nebraska would eliminate parking, on-street parking spaces. To achieve this, additional adjustments outside of the ones proposed would be required. The site plan shows the proposed duplex and the additions in blue, the existing dwelling in red. The property has several mature trees that are proposed to remain on-site. So, staff received comments from the school district and the Grant Neighborhood Association, which are attached to your staff report and the Planning Commission report. The appeal of the decision from the nine neighbors concerned about parking, access, vehicles, vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian safety, and the use of the alley are addressed in your staff report. Staff recommends that you affirm the Planning Commission decision. If you have any questions, I'm available.
We will hear from the public, and first, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to speak.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Doyle, and I'm the architect for this project for Jose Garcia Construction. And I concur with Olivia. I want to point out a couple of items and address the appeal and concerns of the Grant Neighborhood Association. Primarily, I'm going to focus on the alley and our requested adjustments. As stated earlier, this project, this property is owned multifamily residential, which means we are required to have three units, and as that were replacing the accessory dwelling unit. Why we designed it the way that we did? Why did we locate the parking off of the alley? We did this, or I did this for several reasons. One was to maintain the property's current vehicular access point, to preserve the existing street parking, to minimize the view of the parking from the street, and to preserve the mature trees along Nebraska Avenue. As shown in the, through the pictures, there's no existing driveway off of Nebraska Avenue. We wanted to preserve the existing street parking and avoid its loss caused by adding a new driveway curb cut. By locating our residents' parking off of the alley, we are retaining on-street parking. We saw this as a justification for our request of an adjustment to reduce the parking by one space. One of the reasons why I wanted to preserve the mature street trees is they help modulate the light along the southern property line during the warm summer months. The landscape planter strip along Nebraska Avenue also effectively separates pedestrians from vehicular access, vehicular traffic, I mean. And the curb cut, if proposed, would require the loss of those mature trees and the safety barrier for pedestrians on the sidewalk. Also, we wanted to minimize the view of the parking along Nebraska. Parking in the front is not characteristic for multifamily developments and development patterns in this area. In following the Salem Revised Code, Chapter 702, we are minimizing the views of the parking from the public right-of-way and satisfying this objective for parking. By locating the parking in the rear, we're also minimizing pedestrian and vehicular conflicts along Nebraska Avenue. In our original submitted plan, we had six spaces, two for each unit. City staff suggested we request an adjustment to the parking, a reduction to the setback, and provide a landscape planter strip. We agreed with city staff and felt that this adjustment would mitigate the impact on the neighbors. As far as potential relocating vehicular access from Nebraska, a parking lot does not fit within the site. Site is pretty small. It's only 55 feet wide. It was our intention to preserve the existing house and expand its living area, and the drive aisle for a parking lot to serve six spaces is 22 feet wide. And with the proposed addition, as it is, on-site parking does not fit within the lot. And we would have to request a reduction in the parking anyways. It is our intention to create a decent level of comfort for the occupants by retaining the existing trees and providing open and green spaces that are both private and shared between the occupants. If we were to somehow squeeze a drive aisle for the parking to be within the lot, we wouldn't be able to provide any landscaping. Our current design provides landscaping and green space. As it is designed, we believe we are providing adequate parking for the residents of this property. As far as paving of the alley, I feel that paving of the alley would enhance and benefit the neighborhood functions of the alley. It currently does not have any existing stormwater drainage system. To safely convey alley stormwater to its approved point of discharge, a stormwater drainage system along for plans for paving will be submitted at the time of development for Public Works. All utilities will be designed and constructed to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director. So, therefore, we feel that we are satisfying the requirements of the code. Thank you.
So, I have a question, if I may. Essentially, you traded, you were asked to trade a parking spot for increased landscaping to screen the... Do I understand that's kind of what happened here?
Yeah. So, originally, in my design, I had six spaces at the rear.
Right.
It did not account for the 10-foot setback that's required for a parking lot when it's abutting a residential property. So, I talked to the city staff, and we came up with, they suggested that I reduce, apply for a reduction, the parking to five spaces and provide those landscape planter strips along the edge to soften the impact of the parking at the rear.
And will you be, do I understand, then, from what you said, you're going to be paving the entire alleyway from Nebraska to...
As a condition of approval, as stated in their staff report, they're requiring us to pave the alley from the lower property corner all the way to 12th Avenue.
To where again?
12th.
To 12th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I believe that's over 150 feet of paving.
How much?
I believe it's over 150 feet of paving.
Okay.
Don't quote me on that. I haven't measured it.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Oh, no, I apologize. You can't ask questions. You tempted me, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rodney Olberg?
I'm supposed to...
Are you also an applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Wolford. I'm representing Jose Garcia. As many of the items I was going to address have already been mentioned by Olivia and by Marissa, I won't take too much of your time. So, I want to give some insight on why Mr. Garcia is proposing this project. This is not a project for Jose Garcia Construction. This is a project for Jose Garcia's family. Mr. Garcia's wife's grandparents are an elderly retired couple. They came to him for help finding a home in which they can live and fulfill their retirement. They are both on a fixed income, and Jose's solution was to find a single-family home that was zoned in a neighborhood for both single-family and multifamily. The rent from the duplex could help with the mortgage payment for the elderly couple. So, they searched around and found the Nebraska house. It has both multifamily housing and single-family housing in the neighborhood. So, they bought it. They went through the review process. We submitted plans to the city on May 23. The plans deemed complete July 11. And the neighborhood was notice of the plans on July 17. We attended the Grant Neighborhood Meeting on August 1 and received a letter of recommendation to move forward. We went to the Planning Commission meeting on August 6, and I believe that they voted in favor 7 to 1. And then we received a notice of appeal on August 21, which is why we are here. So, we believe that Mr. Garcia has taken the correct avenues required by the city. The plan has been approved on each level that has reviewed the plan. We agree with Olivia and the staff recommendations for approving this project, and we hope you will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Neighborhood Association? Okay. I've got two people signed up. Rodney Olberg?
Yes, I'm Rodney Olberg, and I live at 1155 Nebraska Avenue. On Page 3, Paragraph 2 of staff response states, "There is not enough room in the front of the property to accommodate the five proposed parking spaces, and the parking area would likely not meet required setbacks. Additionally, a small parking lot in the front of the property would not be consistent with the development patterns in the area." The front of the 1175 property is the same 55 feet as the back of the property, and if you cannot fit five spaces in the front, why do you think five spaces in the back would fit, which is still 55 feet? This does not make sense. Furthermore, every single house, including the city-owned duplex, to the east of the 1175 property, all have front driveway parking, most of which also includes a garage. So, in reality, putting parking off the alleyway in the back would not be consistent with the development patterns in the area. Furthermore, planning staff response states that there are four mature trees located within 20 feet of the property, front property line. The location of the driveway along the eastern property line would require the removal of three mature trees. If the trees were removed, there is a small portion of property, 15 foot by 20 foot, which would meet the required setbacks of the front and side property lines. The trees in question are, one, a black locust tree, which is considered an invasive species, which generates suckers similar to bamboo and sharp spines. I am continuously removing these spiny shoots from my property. The second tree is a black walnut, which has contributed to destroying the sidewalk in Nebraska Avenue and creates a mess when dropping walnuts and attracts unwanted critters. The third tree is a holly tree, which in itself is a problem with its sharp leaves and high maintenance. I would also like to speak about the fence on the west property line. The fence is built inside my property line, and we will not get permission to satisfy any code requirements for this development. Therefore, the developer will need to build his own fence to satisfy any code requirements for fencing on the west side of the property. We will also not be giving our permission to attach or secure anything to our fence to satisfy any of the developer code requirements. And the Grant Neighborhood has also changed their letter from approving to approving as long as the current codes are abided by.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you agree with that? Pardon? You agree with that, then?
Yes, which would mean they would have to use the 10-foot setback, which would, at that point, would also not allow, I don't believe, six spaces at the back of the property.
Okay.
They would be very small spaces.
Okay. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming down, Mr. Olberg, and thank you for your civic involvement.
Thank you.
I look at the addresses. It looks like you might be right next door to the property?
I am directly west of the property, yes.
And maybe I'm a little uncertain as to, would the alley that is being paved, would that pavement be behind your property or just going...
No. It would go from the eastern corner of our property to 12th Street.
Okay. And in general, do you think... And in general, do you think paving of the alley behind your home and in that alley there is a good thing or a bad thing?
For me personally, it would not affect me. For several of the houses that are on the other side of the alley, it would, I think it would probably create problems.
How so?
When Market Street changed from two-lane to four-lane, they took all the parking for those houses along Market Street, and those people now have to park in the alley. And there, I believe, are something in the neighborhood of 13 vehicles parking there for the different houses that live across, along that alley. There are, is at least one that has to open a gate, and she'll have to stop in the alley to open the gate to get in. And that person has had problems several times with others trying to use the alley because that alley goes from an alley that runs north and south to 12th Street. And it has turned into a very, very busy place. They've had problems with fire getting in. There was a fire right next door, in fact, on the 1175 property here several years ago. And the fire department had a heck of a time trying to get in there to take care of it.
Thanks again. One more question. How long have you lived in your house?
I have lived there for about 44 years.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Amanda Stone?
Hello, I'm Amanda Scott. I live at 1166 Market Street. So at the September Grant Neighborhood Association meeting, we were finally granted the opportunity to speak in regards to 1175 Nebraska Avenue, where testimony was heard as well as neighbors concerned that the Grant Neighborhood Association wishes to amend the record to provide a revised letter, which I believe you got. If you can't fix, if you can't fit all six required parking spaces in the 55-foot property area, then why give the developer the opportunity to take advantage of variances to develop a business such as rental properties? This proposed development appears to be oversized for the lot. A homeowner is required to meet all the SRC codes. For example, to construct a woodworking shop, a homeowner would have to meet all the codes and wouldn't get variances. It would be doubtful if they did. The subject property will be required to pay part of the alleyway from the end, from the west end of his property to 12th Street. Paving part of the alleyway will include the need to grade the alley, put in proper drainage, take an unknown amount of time, and cause residents to be locked out of their home. We all have jobs, schools, doctor's appointments, and right now, the SRC code 93.02OD states 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. is acceptable working hours, but 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. is when people work, go to school, have doctor's appointments, dentist, go shopping. So we would constantly be in conflict with construction and the alleyway, and then we'd have to fight on 12th Street. They said that we could just park on 12th Street and walk to our homes, which would be, we would walking through a construction site, and then we would be fighting the people who park on 12th Street for parking, which I have 35 signatures from all of the neighbors who said, "If you take my parking space, I will tow you." So we have only recently been made aware that the alleyway was made as a service road and that all of our power, water, and sewer pipes are in the alleyway for the surrounding And the alleyway is supposed to be just a driveway, not a through street that you use every single day. Paving the surrounding, or paving the alleyway, we think might break sewer pipes, and we actually had wrote a router out a couple weeks ago to fix some broken pipes. And also, there's live wires that aren't wrapped in conduit or anything, so that's another issue that we think would have to be addressed. And if the alleyway is paved and say, "My sewer line broke," and we have to get repaved or we'd have to get it fixed, we'd have to dig through the pavement, dig down the four feet, have it fixed, replace all the dirt and soil, and then repave it. So that's an added expense, and one of our neighbors just paid $5,000 just to fix the, I think it was like five feet of piping. So I can't imagine what the cost would be added to redo paving.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Right, thank you. Anyone else who didn't sign up want to testify on the, yes?
Thank you. My name is Artemis Light. I am the current residence of 1175, and I actually came to the great state of Oregon because I was enamored by its beauty. I specifically sought out the landlord that I'm currently renting from because of his overall hospitality and general well-being of how he was able to accommodate my specific needs. What I would like to address to the community is a sign of character that I have felt very passionate about from my current landlord. The main thing that I have had concerns with, with my residency here in Oregon, has been a shock about petty crime and a general rundown atmosphere, whether it's worn-down sidewalk streets that we are continually walking across, whether it's my recycling trash can getting stolen off of my back porch, or the fact that I can't park in the front of my house because all the street is completely filled. And I do currently park my car in the area that the parking lot would be, because that is the only place that is accessible. I just wanted to let the community know that I have felt that my landlord's ability to accommodate my needs would also increase the productivity, the ability to potentially reduce crime by making it cleaner and safer, and by making the general accessibility of that rundown alleyway to be less seen as an opportunity by criminals and the like that I've come across with. Hopefully, in a pursuit that we'll be able to have a cleaner environment, something more akin to what I had hoped for initially when I moved here. Thank you.
So you're in favor of the project, or?
Yes. I've enjoyed how my landlord has been able to accommodate my needs at this point, and I feel like he would do the same things for both the community, which is why I see an excitement for a paved alleyway in the back as well as something that he didn't potentially have to do, but was offering to do for anybody's needs.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else? All right, the applicant can rebut if you would like to, if you want to respond to anything you heard that you'd like to respond to. Yes, see if they want to.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to the fire concern. At the pre-application meeting we had with city staff that was required for our application, we spoke with the fire, and they know that they, the alleyway, they cannot drive down. It's too narrow for a truck to make any kind of turnaround. Also, Nebraska Avenue is their access point, so they're requiring us to fire sprinkler the duplex. And so we're going to fire sprinkler the duplex. It's actually in the hands of the designer right now. We're just waiting on this process to conclude. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia? Does anyone have any questions for staff? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. RM2, could they demolish the current single-family structure as well and stick a fourplex or a sixplex on that?
Yes. It would go through a similar process, but it would...
Correct. And then they actually would have that much more space without the duplex to actually stick even more parking on that back area, correct?
Potentially, if they removed both the dwellings.
Good. Just wanted to verify, compared to what was up there, what could in fact be put in place on the property.
Correct. They're meeting minimum density. There's much more density there.
Correct. Thank you.
Could you call up, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor. Could you call up the site plan again? There. Now, take us through this again, orient again. Where's, where are the streets and where's the alley and kind of get us to the... That's the alley, okay?
Yeah, I was trying to get to the...
Was the alley on the right side or the left side of that thing?
So the property is shown in red. To the right, you have 12th Street. To the left, you have Capital, right? And the alley is on the north side of that property, so you have Nebraska on the south, and then there's an alley. So right here is the alley.
Okay.
The applicant, according, the planning commission required that they pave the alley from this point to 12th Street for access. I believe that this alley serves the commercial, already has the commercial, is paid for the commercial development on marketing capital.
Go, now go to the one that shows the buildings. Yeah, now what, the exist...
Let me get to the big one, sorry.
No. There.
So the alley is back here.
Yeah.
And the Nebraska is right off the page, so this is the sidewalk for Nebraska.
And which is the existing building, the pink?
The red is the existing dwelling that's to remain. I don't have a picture of the existing ADU that's going to be demolished because it's proposed.
But there is a bill, another building on the property that will be demolished. Where's its general location?
It's generally in this location of this duplex, at the backside of the duplex.
Okay.
Back here.
So that building comes down.
Correct.
The existing building is remodeled as a single-family or a single residence.
Will be remained with an addition. Mm-hmm. The blue is the addition to the single family.
What's that?
It's just an addition to square footage to the, to the single family, so the single family will stay.
Got it. So there will be, there are two buildings now, there will be two buildings when it's done.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Tom.
Sure, thanks. I guess my first question is more of a technical one. Both you and I think maybe Ms. Doyle, the architect, said that it was required to have three units. I'm curious as to why did you use that word as opposed to saying allowed to have?
So we have minimum and maximum density for multifamily development. So for this property, based on the size of the property, three units is the minimum density, so they would need an adjustment if they wanted to go below that.
All right. And so what, the maximum, I think somebody asked, would be like the fourplex, sixplex, Counselor?
More or more.
Yeah, more. Okay. That's, that's good enough. I know six is a pretty big jump.
It's probably close to six.
Then, how long has this site and this whole area been zoned RM2?
I'm, for a really long time. I couldn't give you the exact date, but I'm, if I had to reach back, I want to say that it was, it came in. So it was probably from annexation. It was, it's been, it's downtown, so I would assume that it's been multifamily for...
About 20 years.
Yeah, or more.
I'm sorry?
Late 70s.
Late 70s?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be about 40-plus years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have, thanks.
So again, one more time, I want to understand this. The minimum number of units on one of these RM2 lots is?
Well, it depends on the size of the property. So based off the acreage of this property, this property is required of three.
How many will it have under this plan?
Three.
Okay. So if they just made that two single-family homes, they wouldn't be meeting your code, our code?
Correct. We would be requesting, they would be requesting an adjustment to the density standard. And we need more housing, right?
Thank you, Olivia. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Nope. All righty, I'm going to close the hearing. Counselor Hoy, do you want to lead us on this?
Happy to, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council affirm the August 7, 2019 Planning Commission decision.
Second by Anderson. Okay, any discussion?
I think that this, this plan addresses exactly the kind of thing that we're trying to do, which is increase our density. It increases our number of housing units, and I think it does it in a thoughtful way. I understand that it's difficult when neighborhoods get changed, but this is exactly the point of RM2 housing, so, or zoning, so I think it's a good plan.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. I'll open the next public hearing, if you'd like to.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing regarding the vacation of a portion of Dogwood Drive South. The applicable criteria are SRC 255.065B6 and ORS 271.080 through 271.230. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action of poor damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant's limited to 10 minutes. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes. Other interested persons are limited to three minutes, and the applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Gamallo. I am a senior transportation planner with the Public Works Department. I would like to enter the staff report into the record. This is a public hearing to consider a petition initiated vacation of a portion of Dogwood Drive South. This portion of Dogwood Drive South is unimproved and is currently being used as the driveway for two separate tax lots. Vacation of this right-of-way is a condition of approval for Phase Two of the Dogwood Heights subdivision. Currently, there are water and, water main and sewer line located within the proposed vacation. The petitioner is proposing to relocate these facilities as part of Phase Two of the Dogwood Heights subdivision. Once the plat for Phase Two of the Dogwood subdivision is approved, these facilities will no longer be needed and will be abandoned. So staff is recommending that council approve the petition to vacate this portion of Dogwood Drive South, subject to the following condition. Final approval of the Dogwood Heights Phase Two subdivision plat or provision of easements for the construction, maintenance, repair, and replacement of existing municipal utilities proposed to remain within the current right-of-way in a form and location acceptable to the city. The reason for this condition is to ensure that service is maintained until the new water and sewer mains are operational. In addition, staff is also recommending that council waive the assessment of special benefit as the petitioner is dedicating significantly more land to the city's right-of-way in comparison to the amount proposed for the vacation. That's all I have. If you have any questions, feel free.
Okay, I have one person signed up. Mark, Mark Grins. Mark, you're representing the applicant?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Grins, and I'm with Multitec Engineering.
Could you get closer to that mic a little bit? Great, thank you.
Mark Grins with Multitec Engineering. We're representing the applicant. As staff indicated, this is, this is a continuation of the processes that we're following to complete the Dogwood subdivision that was council-approved sometime in the past, and we've got, the Phase One project construction is completed, the plat's in the process being recorded, and Phase Two processes get started, and this is a part of that process that we need to complete. When the Phase Two plat is completed and the subdivision's completed, then all of those utilities will be relocated. So I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might have of our, of our firm or the applicant.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Grins. It seems like we had quite a discussion about this last time, and I've got a couple questions, and I think one of them already been answered, and what we have in the staff or in our written stuff, it doesn't say where the proposed park land in that was, that was Phase Four, and I see that that's where it is now.
That's correct.
And if I recall, there was, there were, one of the issues of contention there was the 15% grade and the 40-foot retaining wall and all that sort of stuff. Are there any grading issues that would be present in the newly developed roads that you have there?
None that work. None that were previously identified as we went through the process. And the, the park is being created through a property line adjustment process that's just about being completed, so-
Well, that's good, and I'm glad-
So that it's not part of the actual subdivision now. It's being separated out through that, so.
And what will happen to the vacated property? Is that going to become part of different building lots?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be joined into, as part of the subdivision, when you approved it, it delineated that, that this right-of-way, when it's vacated, the part that comes back to us, part of one piece goes to an adjoining property.
Yeah, part of two tax lots, I think that's-
But the rest of it comes to us, and all that property will be incorporated into the, to the buildable lot areas.
And the only other thing I look at it is there's kind of, Dogwood Drive would have gone straight through to Spring Street, it looks like. And now there's the loop around. That going to have any effect on traffic flow, traffic patterns?
Well, I doubt it, because today, Dogwood doesn't go through. So this, and one of the reasons, this will test your memory, but one of the reasons that this was done was because there was such a topography problem down Dogwood that this circuitous route allows us to create much flatter slopes in there for-
Well, that's very good. I certainly do remember that. And so that's good. And I also would guess that this is not a, going to be, about the only people are going to be on this, these streets are going to be the people who live in that area.
Yeah, it will make, it will complete a connection for Dogwood that goes off to the, to the northeast. So there, there could be some other pass through traffic, but it would be minor. This, this is not a direct route to, to much of anywhere.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Grins? Any, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else want to testify on this issue? Any questions for staff? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My closed public hearing. Councilor Hoy.
I move the council approve the vacation of a portion of Dogwood Drive South and waive the assessment and special benefit, subject to the following condition. Final approval of the Dogwood Heights Phase 2 subdivision plat or provision of easements for the construction, maintenance, repair, and replacement of existing municipal utilities proposed to remain within the current right-of-way in a form and location acceptable to the city.
Counselor Cook seconded it. Yeah, I thought I heard her.
She was speaking through me because she was behind me.
Okay, any, yes, councilor, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to thank the staff for all of the work around the Dogwood Heights subdivision, all of the phases, and the tremendous teamwork that's been required for the whole community to make this project come together.
Well, thank you. I've only worked on the right-of-way vacations. Our community development department that did all the hard work on that.
Right, thank you.
This is the, this is the missing link, right here. Take, take credit.
Take the credit.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to special orders of business. Counselor Hoy. Do you have a motion?
I move council advance ordinance bill number 12-19, creating Salem Revised Code, Chapter 40, establishing an operating fee and admitting SRC Chapter 70.250 to first reading.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Okay. We had an opening there at the beginning. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah.
Just, Hoy got his hand up, and it's his motion. Let me, let him go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we've, we've heard a lot of folks talk about their opinions on whether we ought to do this, whether we ought to not do this, whether we ought to send it to voters or not send it to voters. And I've listened long and hard, and I've talked to a lot of my neighbors. I've been to several neighborhood meetings over the past few months and talking about this issue. And while not everybody's comfortable with it, certainly, and there are some people who are opposed to it, the majority of the folks are really concerned with our maintenance of public safety services, which is the vast majority of the general fund budget. I want to remind everybody, before you make this vote, remember, we still only have three firefighters on every engine. You know, the standard is four. We've never gotten back to that level of service. And we are jeopardizing public safety every day that we send, and our firefighter's safety every day that we send out three firefighters on one of those trucks and not four. And this revenue will help us get back to that level of service and not only increase it to four, but it'll increase the number of, potentially the number of fire stations. It'll help us maintain our police services. This is, the, the woman who spoke earlier about where they're ready for us to do this, she was right on. It's our job to do this. The city, the residents of the city of Salem need these services, and I understand that, you know, this will be an impact on some folks. I think it's a minimal impact for the level of, the benefit that we'll be getting for this. And so I would, I would encourage all of my colleagues to support this motion.
Counselor Lewis.
I'm going to propose a substitute motion, and that is that we follow staff recommendation with the addition of sending this issue to the voters.
Second by Nanki.
We have, we've heard from a lot of people, I think for me at least, what I've heard consistently, is that there is a recognition, even though the, the general public does not have the understanding of the budget issues as well as the folks on the Budget Committee or this council. But there is a strong consensus that they're understanding that the, the city is in needs of the funds. I don't think that's really the issue. But we hear repeatedly from the committee that helped put this together up until people that testified tonight, they want this to go to the voters. I strongly advise us to do that. I think it's the best thing, the best course.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we've had the bulk of this discussion at a prior meeting when we spoke to both it and the employee payroll tax. But scares me, scares me not sending it out to the voters, knowing the past. It's technically not an emergency, because we've known this has been out there forever, and we could have done this three years ago, or five years ago, or eight years ago. It's not like, we haven't been aware of the ongoing budgetary situation inside of the city. We did go out and speak all over the city and talk to people about the, the budgetary shortfalls in the past as well, and, and they responded to that. I, for one, know there is a need, but how does one satisfy that need? And by not, you know, our, our voters have been pretty responsive. And if you show them the need, they step up and take care of their city. It's when you don't, and there, most of them are going to find out about it, not from this process, it'll just be, hey, you hear what the city did, and we will have people angry out there. And if it comes back up to a vote, it's, it's not going to be, hey, do you want to do this or not? The city tried to stuff this down our throats, and they will vote to, in response accordingly. So, at your peril.
Counselor Anderson.
I think I'm one of two counselors who has six neighborhood groups in their area. And I've been to all six of them at various times and had discussions about this. And yes, there are people who say, well, it ought to go to the voters, the voters ought to decide. But there is a larger number of people who say something to the effect that was said by someone who testified earlier, I think it was Jacqueline Shindell, that, I think her words were, we should take a brave pill, the councilors should take a brave pill and vote it themselves. And I'm echoing what Counselor Hoy here said. And Counselor Nanki is correct. We, we've had this discussion about two meetings ago, I think, when we had two revenue sources that were on the agenda. One was the employee-paid payroll tax, and one is this operating fee. And at the time, we were moving toward what I thought was a pretty good compromise, that is the payroll tax, which for various reasons would take longer to implement, is one that would go to the public for a vote. And the operating tax would be one that the council, the operating tax, which can come sooner, is one that we, as the council, should take a brave pill and vote on. So I'm going to be voting against this motion. I think we all have said in one way or the other, everybody here on this council, that this is a good idea, and we as counselors support it. Well, then I think we should do our jobs. We were elected to make hard decisions. This is a hard decision. Let's make this decision. So I will vote against the motion, the substitute motion.
Counselor Rossi.
And I, just to add, what I said before in the previous meeting was that the danger of putting this out to voters is the, the period of time where our budget shortfall causes us to lose employers, employees, and have to then come back and rehire and retrain people later, which is why this compromise, as Counselor Anderson was discussing, of the, the fee that would, or the tax that would take longer to implement would be pushed out to the voters. But this, to just plug the gap, just to keep services going and to continue the good standing that we have with our financial position, as we were hearing at the Finance Committee tonight, it was in our annual report that there's a risk that we're not, we don't have enough working capital to keep going, that we need to do this to keep the city moving. So I have to support it.
Counselor.
I just want to take this opportunity, as I have been at neighborhood associations and with neighbors when this question comes up, that there are lots of ways to pay for things. And right now, when we do have, when we are dipping into working capital, when our service needs are not at the level that they need to be in a community to be able to meet our obligations, our requirements, and our needs within those communities, the people that are paying the price are paying with their time, with their safety, with the opportunities that they're not able to access. And quite frequently, those are in the communities that can least afford it, that can least afford to have a slower response time when there's an incident, that can least afford to have a sidewalk that's incomplete or missing, that can least afford to have a traffic light that's on the verge of not working for a few minutes. It's, these are important vital services that we are obligated to provide for a lot of people. I understand that this may be unpopular, and I understand that people may exercise their voice at the ballot box, which is fine. I'm not afraid of that. I'm under the impression that if you're only working to be able to maintain your seat in council, but you're not willing to have secure funding for these vital services, there's a disconnect. And I just, I understand I'm leaving. I don't want this to be taken lightly. It's something that I've advocated for. These programs are important. We heard testimony about it at budget. We hear it at neighborhood meetings. These programs deserve stable funding. There's a reason that we don't use GoFundMe to fund our city services. We're required to provide services. We have an obligation to provide services. And the other side of that is the transparency of saying, this is how much it costs. And the more people that are here, the more it costs to be able to provide those services. But the good news is, just as Counselor Hoy pointed out, if we all work together to do this, we can share that burden financially so that a minority of our population is not sharing the bulk of that through their time, decreased response time, lack of services, and likewise. So please remember that when you have this vote.
Okay, anyone else? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Is this a substitute motion?
I'm sorry, substitute motion. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the motion that's on the floor right now, is Counselor Lewis's. Counselor Lewis, do you want to restate your motion? If you don't want to, you don't have.
I move staff recommendation with the addition of sending the issue to the voters. And if I could make one additional stand, because I, I don't want people to be misinformed, there is time to send this to the voters in May of 2020. Assuming that that ballot measure passes, there is time to start collecting in January of 2021, which would keep us in compliance. So we wouldn't be in a situation where we're going to be laying off anybody. We wouldn't be worrying about police officers. We would be worrying about those if this decision is made tonight to have the council pass this, and then it's referred to the voters. Then we will not only run out of time, but we're going to run into the concern that the voters have spoken, and then the idea of convincing them to pass it is going to be much harder, much harder.
Counselor Kesar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to put out to the council, I guess, since this is technically deliberations on this, and not, not just comments, I guess, about how we feel about it, but playing out the scenario, just to say, we send this to voters and the voters do not approve it. And I guess my statement is to challenge you to think about then what? And I'm not sure what the then what is, because if the message from voters is, we don't want to do this, we don't want to fix the problem we have, we don't want to sustain services, we want to cut the budget, then what? We are under an obligation, a statutory one, to run the city. I think I mentioned before, we, we can't, we can't go bankrupt, we can't go out of business. We could disincorporate, we're probably not going to do that. But I do challenge the council to think about, you know, six months or seven, whenever, May, after May, if voters do vote this down, what, what are the options realistically? And what realistically are the cuts? We know police and fire make up the bulk of the general fund. We also know property taxes don't even cover our police and fire expenses. So what you're left with is essentially parks, community development, things that we're going to, essentially, if we, if we say police and fire off the table, we're looking at, I, I don't know what that actually looks like as a city. I don't know what that looks like for business, for development. If permits take years potentially to process, if we gut community development, for instance, and lay off half the staff, I mean, you're looking at significant lags in time to get things through the, the permitting process. I mean, I think we have to think about that, and I think we have to be realistic. I, I really did take to heart the, the comments that I think it was Matt made. He said, people do feel tax burden, and I, I get that. We have, we've had bonds come through, big ones, recently. But I also think about this in terms of, we are, we are in charge of maintaining the house. If, if the city is our house and we're in charge of maintaining that, and this is not an emergency to maybe Counselor Nanki's point, say it is a leaky roof, but it's been leaking for quite some time, and it starts out small and it gets worse. It's not going to kill anybody. It's going to be hard to live there perhaps, depending on how bad it is. But what is our obligation to fix the leak? Do we go out to our neighbors and say, should I fix the leak? Are you okay if we fix the leak? Or roommates, I guess it would be, since we're all living under this house? Should we fix the leak? And if the roommate, for one reason or another, says, you know, I don't live in that part of the house, so I don't really, you know, no, I don't want to fix it, then what are we left with doing? You still have that problem. We're still not solving the issue. We're left with very, very limited choices. So I just want to put that out there for serious consideration. I hope, I hope the council will seriously think about, in the next nine months, if this is not approved by voters, what happens next? And what is our responsibility? What is our fiduciary responsibility to the city, to our constituents, to our neighbors for this problem?
Well, I, I, I've, I've heard so many different messages, and I think that may be the problem. I heard, I've heard so much inaccurate information in this discussion, and accurate information, and accusations of one thing or another, or motives, a lot of discussion. And I think one of the problems is still, we've not taken this out and made the case. Now, going to a neighborhood group is one thing. Going to the public and talking to them about what's really going on here, I think, is another. I happen to agree completely with Counselor Hoy on his analysis of the impact- I happen to agree completely with Counselor Hoy on his analysis of the impact. The problem is, resolving that impact is going to take this measure and a payroll tax to resolve. And I think that I worry deeply that you take this measure on yourselves and just pass it. And I understand the brave pill concept, I've been down that road, but it may be the kind of a false valor, because you will, I'm afraid, poison the well for the second half of this, which really does deal with services. This just deals with kind of keeping things going as they are for the next two or three years, depending on what the finances look like for the city. This isn't next year. This isn't this year. We're not cutting police or fire this year or next year. We do have time to make the case and to educate the public about how the city's finances look. I mean, when I hear someone say, you've, you know, sort of explaining what we're doing in terms of the police structure somehow relates to what we're talking about, I get the feeling the story isn't out there clearly. And that's what elections are all about. And I just, I'm genuinely concerned, because I happen to think both measures are very, very important. So I'm going to vote with Counselor Lewis on this one. Okay? Okay, all those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, ayes, raise your hand so she can count. You got us? Okay. Okay, back to the main motion, which is, we know what it is, don't we? Okay. Everybody know what the main motion is? Okay. Yes, sir.
Just one item that really applied to either one of these motions. One of the concerns has been the amount of the operating fee, and it was, staff recommendation was eight dollars, or excuse me, $10, and we took it down to $8, and there still was a concern. But on our, I think it's item C of our agenda packet of number five, there is a discussion, and I hope I get this right, and I'm looking at you, Alicia, the Uniform Rate Reduction or Relief Act, anyway, there's something, the URRR, that applies already to low-income seniors, excuse me, applies to disabled and seniors, and could potentially apply to low-income. Is that correct?
Yes, it currently applies to elderly and dis-
And that already is there for the utility relief for water and other utility rates the city charges. And that same relief would be here in the, for the operating fee of $8 for individuals who, if they qualify for the utility rate relief on the water side of it, they would also qualify for the same relief here.
That's the way the ordinance is currently written.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
I just had a question about the relief program. I'm not very familiar with it, so if somebody was eligible for the relief program, do they have to, what's a process to apply?
We're in the middle of working with Mid-Willemette Valley Community Action Agency to develop a new process. And so currently, we have people historically that have been on our program. And now we're working with them as they're qualifying people through the course of their year, to qualify new people for our program as well. So the application process is now through Mid-Willemette Valley Community Action Agency.
Thank you.
Okay. Am I ready? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Is that correct? This is to declare the Ward Seven council position vacant. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One moment, please, I apologize.
It's right at the top of the yellow sheet.
Thank you. It is with sadness that I move that we declare the Ward Seven council position vacant.
Second by Kazer. Do you want to argue this, Counselor Cook?
Look, I have thoroughly enjoyed this time on council, but my kids need me at night. They need me home. And it's not just the one night, it's all the neighborhood meetings. And even though I've got wonderful family and wonderful friends that are willing to help, this past month, I think I've spent about 70 bucks on childcare in the evenings. And for me to just do my full swing, not in budget committee, we're looking at about a $200 a month commitment solely for childcare, so I can come home to my daughter still awake saying, mommy!
And still know it's mommy, huh? You know, I think it's one of the things that people don't always realize when they get, when they're running for these offices or thinking about them, is how much time and money it takes to do this, but time especially. And what your decision is makes so much sense, given the situation. I really admire you for making it. I've watched people make other decisions where they call in, or, you know, every meeting for a few months, or things like that, and I admire you for taking, I think, a very, very adult stance by saying, I just can't do it. So I congratulate you on it, and I'm, along with, I think, everyone else, I'm genuinely sorry, bottom of my heart, genuinely sorry that you had to reach this decision. But boy, is it understandable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And you'll still see me around.
Oh, I hope so.
I'm sure I'll be just more local and not as often, so.
Very good. Anyone else? To debate this, you want to, what?
No, I'd like to amend the motion to say, my amendment is that we declare it vacant, and we thank Counselor Cook for her dedicated service to the council.
I think that's friendly, yeah.
That's friendly, some of us bought flowers.
I think he brought macaroons.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Now, do we want to, does anyone need to hear the process? I'd kind of like to, if you think it would be helpful, describe the, what we're going to be doing next on this. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
I think just for any public that's watching.
Sure.
Well, that's what the city attorney gets the big bucks for, so we're going to let you take a run at this.
So tomorrow, the city manager's office will be announcing the vacancy and that they're accepting applications. Qualifications for office are fairly simple, as I think you're all aware. You just need to be a resident of the ward and a registered voter. So I believe the application process will run about two weeks, and I think the city managers indicated some potential dates for the boards and a commissions appointments committee. The charter and the council rules require that, once the application period has ended, all qualified applications are sent to the committee. The committee will review them, then make recommendations to council. Council can decide if they want to have interviews of the applicants, or whether they just want to make an appointment based on the applications that have been received. At that point, the person who is appointed will serve out the remainder of the term, which is December 2020.
Okay. Do you understand? Okay. Well, why don't you join me, or give Counselor Cook a standing ovation? Sit down and get back to work, please. Information reports, any questions on anything? There sure is. Anybody want to bring anything out, talk about it? Anything? Anybody? Okay. Go to first reading, then.
Ordinance Bill Number 519, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 4980 Center Street Northeast annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One.
Counselor Hoy?
I move we conduct first reading of the ordinance bill Number 5-19, annexing, applying city of service RA. I'm sorry, what? Sorry.
What's wrong?
That's the right one.
Wrong one?
Counselor Nanki, I think, was having a problem with his computer.
I'm on the right one, folks, I promise.
You want to do staff recommendation?
I could do that.
Here's a.
I move staff recommendation.
It's a great deep call.
But then nobody knows what we're talking about.
All those in favor, anyone want to discuss the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't we have to do a roll call?
Who was second? You want a roll call?
No, I thought we did on those, I'm sorry.
Who was the second?
Do you need a roll call?
No.
No, I need a second.
Well, that was Kazer.
That was Kazer, okay.
I'm sorry. She can have a very quiet voice. I missed you, I heard Kazer. Okay.
Do we need to vote on that?
We just voted on it. How about again? All those in favor of Counselor Hoy's motion, seconded by Counselor Kazer, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay.
Okay. Ordinance Bill Number 1419, an ordinance declaring and proclaiming a certain territory located at the 4,400 to 4,600 blocks of Hazel Green Road Northeast annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing Salem area comprehensive plan map designation, prescribing zoning, and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One.
Counselor Austin.
Staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Ordinance Bill Number 1719, an ordinance relating to floodplain overlay zone, amending SRC Chapter 601.
I move staff recommendation.
Was it you, Nanki, or was it Anderson? Anderson, okay. You know, this is a very, is there any discussion? This is a very big deal. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I asked Director Fernandez right after we got out of executive session on another issue, and he couldn't give me a 100% affirmative answer regarding flood insurance, because at the water, wastewater task force meetings, we had spoke of, as soon as mapping kind of came in and potentially affected some of the properties, it would be smarter to have that insurance first, because it would cost you less when they inflict the new system on you. Does that apply to any of the property that's going to be included by this ordinance?
No, it would not. There's a very, very small map change that affects really nobody, so not for this case.
Excellent. Thank you.
Where would you find, because I don't think most people probably know exactly what this floodplain map looks like, what it's going to do. Where would they go visit this and get a look at its impact on their property?
We actually do a lot of outreach to realtors, and it's exactly the same question. We have a floodway map on our website. I don't have the exact web address.
On your website?
On the city's website.
Under?
If you just look up floodway, floodplain map.
Floodplain map.
That you'll find it there.
Go to city website, put in floodplain map, and you can see if you're in this area, right?
Yes, and you can also go to the FEMA map service center.
Okay.
And type your address, and they will pull that same map up at the FEMA website. So there's a couple of different ways to do it.
And if I disagree with you, I was here in, say, I was here in '96, and I saw the water come up to a block away, but it didn't get to me. Can I appeal?
That is a very long answer. A simple answer is no.
Well, give me the short answer.
Simple answer is no.
There is no appeal from this?
There are processes that you can apply to FEMA to change the maps.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, but there is a way, if you think your property is designated improperly, there is a way to deal with it?
Yes.
Okay. And they can call you?
Yes. I can tell them how to do it, yes.
You can tell them how to do it. Excellent, okay.
If I can, there's another piece, even if that water did not hit you, because of the changes they're making, if it's not an engineered structure, it doesn't count. So like the railroad track berm in West Salem, you have to pretend it's not there.
Why?
Nobody looks like a berm, acts like a berm.
Yeah, that's why Turner's having so much problem out there right now.
Okay.
And that's not a subject of this particular ordinance.
Correct. But when that one comes around.
Okay. Anything else? Is there any good news in this? What's the good news in this? Why is this good?
Well, since you asked, there is a, the ordinance is really, has virtually negligible changes to what we've done before. This has been motivated by the state and federal levels. But there is one minor change that will open the door to lower flood insurance premiums, and so there's a minor adjustment that we're making that's moving us closer to being able to get some bigger discounts.
Well, you've done that in the past. You've been able to keep our flood insurance under control, so.
Yeah, we're at a 25% now. We're on a path to get down to hopefully a 30, or maybe 35% discount. We're shooting for that in the next year.
Excellent, great, thank you. Okay, yes, Counselor Kazer.
Sorry, just one more question. This is related to the work that was done maybe a year, year and a half ago by a task force, or maybe it was a subcommittee, adopting like new models for calculating the floodplain. Is that, is that what this is, the outcome from those meetings?
It's related, but it's not. This actually has to do with the city of Turner getting new maps.
Oh, I see. So this isn't, so this is not city of Salem.
This is not us?
Yeah, the city of Turner map just barely touched us, and that triggered this need.
So this is within Turner, then, with our property up there?
It bled into Salem just a bit.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. We're adjourned. Nope, we're not. We didn't vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, now we're adjourned. A pass.
That would be bad.